And I'm a reporter with San Jose Inside. Tonight, we will be joined by San Jose City Council District Four candidates, Berry Estet Union School District Board Member David Cohen and Councilmember, the current council member representing District Four, Land Yip. Tonight's forum is sponsored by Silicon Valley at Home's Action Fund and California YIMBY. The forum is also hosted by Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Tech Equity Collaborative, ABOD Services, EAH Housing, First Community Housing and Destination Home. So we're just gonna go ahead and start off now with a question about opportunity housing. Each candidate will get two minutes for this question. And we'll start with David Cohen. "The city's general plan task force recently discussed rezoning single-family neighborhoods to allow for missing middle housing, such as duplexes, triplexes, bungalow courts adjacent to urban villages where transit is readily accessible. Eighty-four percent of residential land in San Jose is zoned exclusively for single houses, and the UC Berkeley Othering and Belonging Institute found high levels of this restrictive zoning were linked to greater residential segregation. Do you support extending this type of housing to single-family zones throughout the city beyond urban villages? Why or why not?"
Well, I want to thank the sponsors for hosting this event tonight, and thank you, Grace, for moderating. As far as opportunity housing, I think that we need to study opportunity housing. I think the big issue right now is that when we are building affordable housing and adding denser housing, we are doing it only in certain parts of the city. We are building housing in higher density along our rail corridors, along our transit corridors, which I think is the right thing to do. But most of those transit corridors are only in certain districts in the city. And District Four actually has a large amount of, a large number of those transit corridors. We have light rail on Capitol, we have light rail in North San Jose, we have the Bart Station, so we're taking a lot of the density in San Jose. And there are lots of parts of the city that are not taking up their fair share of the density in San Jose. And so the idea behind the opportunity housing is that certain parts of the city that are not getting enough density and not building affordable housing should also be building some affordable housing. So we should be studying whether or not other parts of the city should take up some of that affordable housing, areas like Almaden and Willow Glen that will not continue to put the burden on the east side of San Jose in building all of the affordable housing.
Grace, I think you're going to me, but you're on mute, so.
I said Councilman Diop.
Yes, so thank you for the question and thank you for everyone who's joined us tonight. Thank you to SV at Home and the organizations that are hosting. So on the issue of opportunity housing, I think the real question is, are we open to rezoning single-family housing areas? I think that's the heart of the question. And I think for San Jose, we have a plan in the general plan to focus on urban villages. And this plan is not something that the city council created. It is something that went through a general plan task force process that reflects the will of San Jose residents. And I think the balance that is being struck is that we, as a city, agree that we need to densify, we need to allow for more housing and more people to come to San Jose. But we should select carefully where we do it, and we've identified urban villages. And so let's do that first. We don't really have any of the urban villages up 100% yet. I'm excited about what's gonna happen at the Berry Estet Bart Station, the urban village around there. We're looking to bring about 5,000 new housing units and 20,000 or so new jobs to that parcel where the flea market is right now. And let's see how that goes, and we can densify in the future gradually. But I think it is strategic to do it around urban villages along transit lines, because people who need affordable housing often need access to public transit or have other needs as well that are readily available within walking distance, you know, groceries and amenities, restaurants, coffee shops, et cetera, et cetera. To start densifying, to start with densifying the outlier parts of San Jose, you know, Almaden that was mentioned, necessitates people who need affordable housing but may or may not have cars. And right now, we're working at VTA to densify, to not densify, to pull into the core, to speed up public transit on a more regular, every 10 minutes, every 15 minutes, so it becomes readily usable like you see on the east coast. If we spread public transit across the city too widely, it's not useful to everybody.
So a follow-up to that question, you know, immediately following the general plan task force meeting on opportunity housing, local neighborhoods, primarily in the affluent areas of the city, took to social media platforms like Nextdoor and Facebook to express their opposition, claiming that if adopted, this would change the character of their neighborhoods. What do you think they mean, and how would you address this? Councilman Diop, let's start with you for this one.
So I won't venture to guess what they mean. I understand the fear of change. I think that's readily understandable and relatable for anybody. Any sort of change is scary, except we all know that change is inevitable. And so what's important is what will we do to shape that change in a positive way, in a way that is beneficial for the city, beneficial for future generations? You know, there's a lot of talk about, you know, racial relationships among groups. And I think part of that, we can infer that I don't want the neighborhood makeup of my neighborhood to change when we bring in more people, when we bring in people of different incomes. But I know, and I'm certain that everybody on the city council and all the candidates running for city council won't relent to that kind of talk. We are a diverse city. We have 40% of folks who speak a different language, who were born outside of America, living in San Jose. And today is Constitution Day. The Constitution was made for America to change, it builds on that flexibility.
David?
Well, let me just say, just in response to something you said before, as a council member for District Four, my focus will be on urban villages. We have really been far behind in building out the urban villages in North San Jose. And our focus in District Four should be making sure that the urban villages in North San Jose are built. My concern is that while we're doing that, we also need to figure out how to get some affordable housing in other parts of the city. When it comes to the concerns that people are having in single-family home neighborhoods, I know a lot of it has to do with parking and extra vehicles if we densify in some of those parts of the city. And those are legitimate concerns that residents have. We need to find solutions to that, and we need to be thoughtful about how we might rezone some of those neighborhoods to make sure that we're not going to overburden the roads and streets and have too many cars in the streets. There are lots of solutions you can come up with as far as parking permits and other things to make sure that our neighborhoods are not overburdened with parking as we come up with ways to build affordable housing in other parts of the city.
Okay, for this next question, we'll go back to two minutes, and we'll start this time with David. "Your current economic conditions risk a wave of foreclosures in sales of naturally affordable rental properties. What strategies should the city pursue to ensure these do not lead to a wave of displacement as that happened in the last recession?"
Well, let me just start by saying that this really isn't a new challenge. I mean, the problem with affordability of housing in San Jose is not something that's happening because of current economic conditions or because of the pandemic. It was true long before the pandemic. We weren't doing enough in San Jose to provide affordable housing for our essential workers and for our residents even before. And clearly, the problem has been exacerbated this year. But, you know, it used to be we were concerned about whether our essential workers, our police officers and teachers can afford to live here. Now, even small business owners, service providers and other people are leaving our city because they can't afford to stay. We're seeing it locally with people fleeing our schools, people moving away because they don't think there's a place here for them anymore. With the ability to work remotely, people are moving out because of the affordability problems. So it's more crucial than ever that we address our need for affordable housing in the city. We need to do that, not just by relying on building market-rate housing. We need to make sure that as we build out our housing stock in the city, that we're enforcing our inclusionary housing policies across the city, making sure that in North San Jose, where we're supposed to be building 20% affordable housing inclusionary in our projects, that we're doing that, that we're not letting developers off the hook, that we're building enough affordable housing along with market-rate housing. That's better for the community. It will also prevent people from having to commute from far away, so it will be better for traffic, better for environment, better for everyone. We want people to be able to live here in our community, people who work here to have a vibrant community for everybody. There is a lot of untapped potential in North San Jose for development, and we need a true vision for building in North San Jose. In addition, there are things the city should be doing in the short term to protect renters. And we're doing things by using our COVID relief funds to provide rental protection, to help protect landlords, working with the state and federal grants to help with mortgage protection and renter protection. So obviously, there's things we should do in the short term, but we should also be remembering that this is a long-term housing problem that we need to address in San Jose.
Councilman Diop?
Could you, I lost the thread. It was about anti-displacement or?
I'll repeat the question. "Current economic conditions risk a wave of foreclosures in sales of natural affordable rental properties. What strategies should the city pursue to ensure these do not lead to a wave of displacement as happened in the last recession?"
So COVID happened unexpectedly, but even before that, San Jose was doubling down on affordable housing. I think just this last week, you know, the city used state money, I think, what, $14.5 million from the governor's office or from the state down to San Jose to purchase some already existing affordable units to continue to using those as affordable housing until, I believe, 2075 or something to that effect. We were making it easier to build granny flats, ADUs, in people's backyards. In fact, if you come to, well, you can't come to City Hall right now, it's closed. But if you would come in on a Tuesday, we have ADU Tuesdays, and within an hour, you can get yourself set up for an ADU in your backyard. If you pick one of two pre-approved designs approved by the city, if you want to do your own, then that'll take longer. But, and we also have grants, a limited number of money for folks. If you rent that unit to folks below market rate, you will get the benefit of some grant money to help build that in your backyard. We've dedicated 45% of our affordable housing dollars to focus on helping the extremely low-income population. So these are things that we've been working towards even before COVID. And I would say that, you know, we've doubled down and we keep on pushing, and we stay the course. I don't know that there is perhaps, well, there is certainly more urgency now to the moment and to the need, but I don't know that we need to steer from what we were doing, because I think we were headed down a pretty good course in making a dent on this very important issue.
Okay, now we're going to go to some rapid-fire questions. So for these questions, you can either answer yes or no, or you can give a brief 30-second answer. And so for all these questions, we'll just start with, you know, Councilman Diop followed by David Cohen. "Do you support Prop 15, aka schools and communities first?"
No, it's the split role, and I'm gonna stay the course. I think that it's gonna help or hurt small businesses.
Well, as somebody who's been on a school board for a long time and remembers, knows that, you know, before Prop 13, California schools were the envy of the nation. I know that we need funding to make sure that we have enough resources in our schools. We need nurses and counselors and librarians. We're the worst in the nation in all of those areas. And so we need to adequately fund our schools in order to support the business needs of our community, and so I'm supporting Prop 15.
"Do you support Measure G in San Jose, which consolidates three different charter amendments into one, including expanding the authority review of the independent police auditor, expanding the planning commission from seven to 11 members, and extending redistricting deadlines as needed?"
Yes, I voted to put it on the ballot.
Yes, I support those measures, or that Measure G, those changes.
"Do you support Measure H in San Jose, which will increase the cardroom tax that will fund general city services, including homelessness?"
I do.
Yes, I do.
"What is your position on Prop 16, which repeals the state's anti-affirmative action ban, Prop 209?"
The council unanimously voted in support of that.
Yes, I support it, and I want to also point out that it's not just about public education, but also about government contracting and making sure that we are able to make sure that government contracts and people hired into government jobs reflect the community that they serve.
Councilman Diop, just to reiterate, you do support this, correct?
Yes, I voted on council. We unanimously did, yes.
Just wanted to make that clear. What is your position on Prop 21, which grants local jurisdictions greater flexibility to expand rent control ordinances?
To expand rent control ordinances? I'm on the record as being against rent control. I think it's imprecise. It hides important market signals, and it's not means-tested. I would much rather prefer affordable, income-restricted affordable housing, where we know we're helping the people who most need it. I often say that, you know, rent control is like, you need to fit into address. You can do the hard work of dieting and exercising, or you can put on a corset. And in the long term, the corset's not helpful or not healthy. And I think rent control is the equivalent of that.
Well, it's interesting, as we talk about worrying about displacement, that we wouldn't at least believe that some form of rent control will be important at a time like this. Having said that, I do support Prop 21. You know, Prop 21 doesn't change rent control locally, but it does give local government the ability to at least have a conversation about what kind of rent control we would like to have here. And I think local control is always better. And so I support Prop 21, giving us the ability to have those conversations here in the city.
"Do you support Measure RR to fund Caltrain operations?"
I do. We definitely need improvements along public transit.
Yes, it's really important that we do that.
"Transportation is our largest source of greenhouse gas emissions. Research shows that expanding capacity for vehicles increases driving miles. Do you support redirecting funding from highway and expressway expansion to fund transit services?"
Depends on what we're talking about specifically. I'm comfortable with the notion, but it really matters to me what we're cutting and what we're funding.
I believe that funding from those measures was intended to be an all-inclusive measure that includes roads and transit. And so I do believe that transit should be part of that funding picture. And so if that's, if redirection is what that takes, then yes, I believe that we should be funding transit from that measure.
That was the last of the rapid-fire questions. So for this next question, you get one minute each, and we'll start with David this time. "When transit vehicles get stuck in traffic, service is slower, less reliable, and more expensive to provide. Transit priority treatments have been shown to improve transit times for buses that often get trapped behind cars and traffic jams. Do you support transit signal priority, and do you support dedicated bus lanes?"
Yes, I think there's a lot we can do with new technology and with transit priority. One of our problems with public transit in our county is the poor connectivity between systems and the inability for people to time and better predict when they're gonna get from place to place. The problem when people are, for example, transferring from light rail to bus and bus-to-bus line is if they're not going to get where they, from one place to another at the right time, and they have to stand and wait, they're less likely to use that system. And so we need to make sure that buses run on time, that transit runs on time. And if anything we can do to speed up that process by providing signal priority, I think is important for those systems to work better. And there's a lot more we can do with new technology, even for timing of light signals at crucial intersections, even for our regular vehicular traffic. And there's places in District Four where we have that problem, and I think we can use more modern technology to improve our traffic flow conditions overall.
Yeah, so I would agree with that. I know that, I've seen it work in other places. I've seen it work in Seattle, I've seen it work in other cities. I think there are hurdles that are unique to San Jose, but it is certainly worth exploring. I would support it.
Okay, for this next question, you each get two minutes, and we'll start with Councilman Diop. "As of August 31st, 2020, there were a total of 17,349 COVID-19 cases and a total of 244 COVID-19-related deaths in Santa Clara County. The data clearly indicates Black and Latinx residents are disproportionately affected. In your opinion, what is the role of the city in addressing the public health consequences of the pandemic? And how do you respond to the racial inequities in public health for Black and Latinx communities?"
So I wish that the city had more of a role. And when I say role, I don't just mean a moral obligation. I mean a seat at the table in terms of government. We, as a city, our charter is about parks and roads and public safety. We don't deal with the health issues. And so we, like everybody else, we being the city council, you know, kind of wait and hear what Dr. Cody, what the folks at the county decide. And we are impacted by that as well. And additionally, we're not funded to do these sort of things. But to the question about the racial inequities, they're certainly there, and we have to recognize it. And as policymakers, we have to use the tools that are within our ability. Again, those tools being in the charter, the roads, the libraries, the parks, and build a community that addresses that the best we can. I think that there, in addition to whatever health discrepancies that existed before that made Latinx and African-American community more susceptible to COVID, I think part of that is also the stress of living in America, the stress of living in such an unaffordable place, such as the Silicon Valley. And those day-to-day stresses wear on you. And it's not just, you know, physiological for whatever reason. But I think the way they're treated, the way the indignities that they suffer every day add up and wear you down. And quite literally, they kill you.
David?
Oh, you know, I believe that there's a lot the city can do to address the racial inequities that lead to different health outcomes in different parts of the city. You know, this pandemic has certainly exposed clear differences in how people in different zip codes are affected by COVID. As a school board member, I saw these disparities firsthand. We provide, for example, critical access to students and meals and technology. And when the schools closed, there was a lot of anxiety added to certain families in certain parts of the city who rely on these, on schools for a safety net. And I was, you know, distributing meals and computers to students in the spring and saw the different, you know, needs in different parts of the community. And so there's, you know, the city, you know, I joined a racial equity task force in the summer to try to, a digital equity task force to ask the city to invest in building out digital infrastructure in parts of the city that needed it. And the city did join that effort, and we are beginning to invest in making sure that certain parts of the city are getting access that they didn't have before. The city did this year create an Office of Racial Equity to begin to study what we can do as we use our budget to make sure that parts of the city that have been under-invested in are getting the right kind of investments in the future. The council member voted against that office in 2019 and was opposed to it, wrote an op-ed against it when that came to a vote. But, you know, obviously, this year with all of the attention on racial equity, the council, the majority of the council changed their tune and voted for that office. There's a lot we can do as we begin to invest in cleaning up our air, making sure that as we electrify our infrastructure, that we're doing it first in the parts of the city that have poorer healthcare, poorer air quality, because they have more transportation, dirty transportation around them. It's the same areas that have dirty air quality, that have poor infrastructure. Those are the same areas, the same zip codes that had poorer COVID outcomes. The city can invest in improving those parts of the community so that the next time these kinds of things hit, the outcomes won't be as bad as poor. So there are things that the city can do as we improve our infrastructure to make sure that these communities have a better healthcare outcome in the future.
Councilman Diop, would you like to respond to David's comment about your vote that you took last year against the Office of Racial Equity?
Sure, please. So David mentions the op-ed I wrote in the Mercury News, and I stand by that. You guys can Google it, and it's still up there. And the issue about, you know, don't politicize the budget. The budget is generally something that historically we vote unanimously on. And there was a risk that time, and actually, it was not supported unanimously during that time. About five days or so before we heard the budget, we voted on the budget, some of my colleagues held a press conference and really pushed for half a million dollars to fund equity. And at that time, just like now, we were under-resourced, understaffed, and we had a lot of needs to put money towards. And I did not think that using money to study what to do was as important as doing it. And it's true that it was politicized, because what happened was we offered $200,000 instead of the $500, one-time dollars, and Councilman Peralas said, "No, I don't want that. Please change the motion, so I'm not on the record of rejecting $200,000 for equity." If it was really about equity, they would have taken the money, and they would have made some progress for equity.
David, would you like to rebuttal at all?
Well, I mean, you know, I think the bottom line is that the city could have made some progress on some of these issues sooner by having an office responsible for looking into how we can invest our budget in a way that improves equity outcomes. And, you know, you can frame it any way you want. There's always a tight budget in the city, and, you know, things get better, things get worse. We always have a limited budget, but it's never going to be the ideal time to invest in improving parts of the city that have had under-investment. The question is, what is the right thing to do for residents who have historically not gotten the right amount of help from the city? And there are many things that we can do without necessarily, that don't necessarily cost us money. But the city does need to put some time and thought into how to invest. Now, we've created that office, and I'm glad we've done that. But we could have been ahead of the game, and would have been nice to have done that before the pandemic hit.
Now, for our viewers on Zoom, you can go ahead and start putting your questions in the Q&amp;A box if you have a question for either of our candidates. And we'll move on to the next question, which you will also get two minutes to respond to. And we will start with, I think we left off on Councilman Diop, I believe. "The tragic death of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade, among others, sparked a national outcry over the treatment of Black Americans by police officers. Local San Jose residents and activists mobilized and took to the streets in solidarity with other marchers and rallies across the country, decrying excessive and sometimes deadly use of force by police officers. Often lost in this conversation is policing of homelessness and how it has been racialized. As a council member, how will you resolve increased tensions and distrust among Black and Brown communities toward the San Jose Police Department? In your opinion, what will it take to restore that trust and also ensure that Black and Brown, unsheltered residents are afforded the same civil rights as everyone else?"
I think that we need to put more of an emphasis on community policing. We do some of that, but still, San Jose doesn't have enough police officers. I know that there is this call for defunding the police. I've, you know, come out on reforming and reimagining, because San Jose still lacks the public safety that we need when somebody is burglarized or there's some issue. Sometimes officers don't get to respond. And we also need more of them so that they can have more people covering and engaging with the community. And so young kids look up at police officers, and they see them as protectors, not somebody who comes in and, you know, arrests an adult figure in the household, or not only just that. And the question is to homeless engagement with SJPD. And part of, you know, reimagining police is better training and, you know, bias, anti-bias training, and trying to alleviate just society-wide, not just between police and homeless people, but I think through everybody, this stigma of race. And, you know, I was reading that caste recently, and I think that book by Mrs. Wilkerson, Isabel Wilkerson, really puts a lot of things into context for me, talking about race, but not so much about the race in terms of racism and overt malice towards skin color and malicious hate towards people. But this idea that, just in a very human way, we all like to feel that we're better off than somebody, that we're not at the bottom of the totem pole. And so while we, as Americans, don't formally adopt the caste system like some other cultures do, inadvertently, we do. And at the very bottom of that rung are the African-American, is the African-American community. So how do we have conversations and engagements to lift people up and help everyone understand that we're all just humans? And we may come from different places, but we all have the same needs and overcome our own problems. And once we have that empathy and that connection, I think society will be in a better place.
David?
Well, the reality is that many people feel they're not being heard and not being served. So we should certainly be willing to take a look at what's happening and evaluate what changes might need to be made. And I will say, you know, I am a parent and a homeowner, and it is important that we have a safe community. And so I certainly want to make sure it's clear. I don't believe that defunding the police is the right path forward. But I do think that we have to be open to potentially reforming the way we fund public safety services. So I think it's time to take a look at, you know, a review of all the different kinds of calls that San Jose police make and what kind, how they respond to those calls, and find out whether the response by police is always the best course of action. Homelessness is one of those cases where it may be that in many cases, police being the first people on the scene is not the correct thing. And that's one of the reasons for distrust that we have from homeless people and from especially Black and Brown homeless people. The police are always the first people to show up. It's showing a certain level of distrust in that community. If we have different kinds of responses that may be more productive, what we learn from the study might tell us that there's other kinds of services that we could be funding with some of our resources that we have in the city. We could be investing in social workers or community service officers. We could be providing job training programs or counseling services that actually help people get back on their feet or direct them into the services that they need that might help them become housed or get the services that will get them back on their feet. Once we learn about that, we can invest. Once we learn about that, we can invest more heavily in the areas of policing that are very effective. Those are, there are clearly areas of the police department that are underfunded. And our communities will be grateful if we, if we invest more heavily in those areas. But we can reinvest in other types of services, the areas that will be more appropriate. And that will, I think, build a better level of trust with some other parts of the community that where, where police response hasn't always been productive.
So for these next couple of questions, which will be two minutes each, I want to introduce Celine Chandler. She is on Destination Homes Lived Experience Advisory Board, which is composed of former and current unhoused individuals. So why don't you go ahead and take it away, Celine?
Can you give us one second to get her on screen?
Hello, everyone.
Hello, Celine.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, hi, Celine.
Hello. So my question is, currently more than 133,000 county residents filed for unemployment since the start of shelter in place. Advocates now estimate more than 44,000 residents are at a high risk of being evicted. What should the city be doing to prevent thousands of San Jose residents from falling into homelessness or being priced out of the city?
Guess it's my turn to answer first. Okay. Well, again, this is a problem that predated the pandemic. Obviously, again, it's been exacerbated by the pandemic. But I will repeat, the city hasn't done enough to build affordable housing, which has, you know, made us very susceptible. And of course I'll point out, it's not just San Jose, but you know, a national problem where affordable housing just hasn't been built. But San Jose had an opportunity to get more affordable housing built and particularly in North San Jose. So I believe, in addition to that, I believe that the city should now pursue opening some sanctioned encampments, which will provide safe places for our unhoused community to live while they're on the street. It will provide monitor facilities, provide safe places for people to live and facilities for people to use, keep our communities safer and cleaner. It will also prevent encampments from growing around our neighborhoods, which is something that's really affecting our community right now. I'm disappointed that our council hasn't been able to follow through on the plan to build temporary housing villages, which was the goal of the council. You know, they were supposed to build, the plan was to build at least 10 of these villages around the city. And as of now, only a couple have opened in the last few years. We need to really push to get more locations that will help people transition. In addition, we should be investing more heavily in nonprofits and organizations like Destination Home who work to prevent people from becoming homeless and losing their homes by providing some extra resources. You know, we know from studies that it's cheaper to invest some of these resources upfront than it is to deal with the costs of homelessness and what, what those costs bring to the city to clean up after. So we should be providing additional resources to, to organizations like that, that prevent people and provide financial help for people. Prevent them from becoming homeless in the first place, providing rent assistance and other financial help for people who are living paycheck to paycheck.
So so the, the problem identified is a very real one. And at the city, we've tried within our ability to impose eviction moratorium. And not only that, anticipating that whenever the moratorium lists, when, whenever we return to quote-unquote normal times, renters in San Jose aren't immediately pushed off a cliff into eviction, but they have one year to pay their back rent. So long as by six months, they've paid down at least half of that debt. I know, I understand that still, that's very, that's a high threshold even still. Yet the, the, the push to say, let's erase rent, I don't think is workable or feasible either. I feel that this is something that is beyond the scope of San Jose or any city, any local jurisdiction. And it really demands the involvement of not just the state government, but federal government. We at the city get limited dollars, we spend them on services, we're not spending enough on the things that we're responsible for. What needs to be passed is some sort of relief package and whether it's state money or federal fund of money. I understand that it's only Congress or the federal government that can print money, that can run a deficit on the budget. States and cities can't. And so the ask to, you know, pay off the landlords so they can pay the banks or to pay the tenants so that they can pay their rent, that is a great idea, except that is not feasible in, 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 in practice. And you can pass the laws and you can try to do it, but, but in reality, you're, you're going to be sending the wrong signals. And the housing providers, the folks that build the housing or they know that this is going to happen in San Jose, then they're not, they're not going to be likely to build affordable or market rent housing in San Jose.
Thank you. So my second question is, on any given night, there are up to 6,172 residents living in our streets, creeks and parks. What more should the city be doing to address their needs and help them into permanent housing?
Me first then, I guess? So I, again, reflecting back on what the city can do in terms of what our mandates are. And I think for, for me, the city's contributions to this, in addition to the dollars and the HUD dollars that we get and we put towards this, is really around land use. David alluded earlier to his disappointment that we weren't building enough. I think it was, he said, separate shelters, but I think he was talking about tiny home villages where we're supposed to have one in every council district. And, and we did a full-on review of parcels of land in San Jose owned by the city. And it's not just, again, pointing at a parcel, but there are neighborhood concerns. You can't, they don't want a homeless encampment or a tiny home village too close to a school. Because of environmental regulations, you can't have it too close to a creek. And when you put all those ifs and buts and setbacks into the algorithm, quote-unquote algorithm, what you end up with in a city as large as San Jose, 10th largest in America, in every council district, there was one, maybe two parcels of land that was okay to build a tiny home. And so it ended up being that we were able to build two right now, one right in, next to the Berries at Bart Station. And then there's another one coming online, right at the 101 280 interchange. But neither of those parcels are owned by the city. We had to go and say, hey, Santa Clara County, hey, BTA, hey, Caltrans, can you bail us out? Can you help us out here? Because the city of San Jose owns a big fat goose egg of usable land for these, these homeless villagers. And that's the real problem. Where do we find the land? You have to purchase it somehow, but you're competing at market value. There is of course eminent domain, but that's something to be used sparingly and not just willy-nilly. So it is a puzzle and really to move forward in it, you have to understand, at least identify this as a problem and have some sort of understanding and I dare say expertise in, in land use to find, identify ways to do it. Because there are laws upon laws in California and you have to navigate them.
Yeah, these things are difficult and I will just say that we have to, you'll notice that many of the times when we have these debates, that the council member will often say, well, these things are limited by, by, you know, land use and other policies. But I'll just say that, you know, what I've learned in my many years of public service is that, you know, the best thing, the most important thing you have to do is to, is to set a goal and, and push to actually achieve that goal. And many times the hurdles are pretty significant, but if you set your mind to it, you can find ways to get it done. And I think the city can find ways to get some of these things done. In addition to some of the things I talked about before, I've long been a proponent of access to mental health services. As a school board member, we brought many mental health services in for our students. And I've seen how providing social workers and counselors has improved behavioral and academic outcomes. And so I believe the city and county need to invest more heavily in on-the-ground mental health services for, for our unhoused residents. And so, you know, we talked before about trust with, of homeless residents in the police. The first people into, into encampments shouldn't necessarily be police officers, but we should be sending mental health professionals in to talk with and meet homeless people, get to know what their specific needs are, tailor specific responses, help guide them to the services that they need. I think that we can get a lot of improvements in results by doing that. Finding out how we can help individual, individuals and provide them with the care that they need and maybe help them get to the places that will, will get them resources so that they can begin to get back into places, into, you know, into society and get back into on their feet and be able to afford, you know, find jobs and get in and afford housing again. We, to do this, we'll need to work with, you know, our county, our neighboring cities, you know, pool resources to be able to afford, to support nonprofits who provide these kinds of services.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Celine, for asking those few questions. Now we're gonna go on to audience member questions. And so this first one, we'll have two minutes and we'll start with David. The city adopted a North San Jose plan that had a goal of 20% affordability. So far, only 4% of the housing in North San Jose is affordable. What would you do to ensure that future housing in North San Jose is affordable so it is not an area of haves and have-nots?
Yeah, this is, this is a really important question. I believe that in order for North San Jose to be a vibrant community, and I think it can be a vibrant community, that we have to make sure that the projects that are built there have a good mix of affordable housing and different levels of affordable housing. We want the communities that are built there to have, you know, people who work in various kinds of jobs to be able to live together. We know that a good, a really strong San Jose will be one where people of all income levels can live together. Teachers, firefighters, retail workers, and also the high-tech workforce that's living in North San Jose all need to live together. So I think that we can, we can get it done by holding to our commitment and making sure that developers find creative ways to make those projects happen. And for example, by making sure that we're using the commercial linkage fee and some of our other money that we now have in San Jose to help subsidize some of the housing, that's the affordable housing elements of the projects in North San Jose, so that the projects that are being built include 20% affordable housing. And I think it can be done. There's a lot more that needs to be done in North San Jose in addition to just making sure we have affordable housing. We need to have a vision for a livable, walkable community that is more than just, you know, individual projects. I think we need to think about how do we have an entertainment center there? How do we have shopping there? How do we have a real vibrant community? You know, we talk about urban villages in North San Jose, but putting a building with a Starbucks next to light rail is not an urban village. That's a place where people can get on the light rail now to now go to Bart and go to work. But when they come home, they still need to get in their car to go shopping. We really need to, if, I think if we do it right, we can get a community that has a walkable, livable city-like environment that can be beneficial to everybody with a library, a community center and parks and all the resources that a, that a good community needs.
Councilman Diop?
Sure. I'll take criticism from what the city's doing. But I just want to quickly point out that the urban village that we have in our district four is at the Berries at Community Center. And there are no plans on the books at least for urban village in North San Jose. So, so the comment about, you know, a Starbucks next to a light rail being an urban village is taken because we do need a whole lot more up there. But nothing anyone sees up there right now is, is the San Jose's vision of an urban village in action, in action. The, the issue of 20% affordable housing being the goal in North San Jose and us only having 4% is a real tragedy of, of history, of circumstance. We, not we, before my time, but the city council enacted an affordable impact fee, affordable housing impact fee. Or sorry, we had inclusionary housing requiring that developers build 20% affordable housing in North San Jose. We were sued and that case went to the Supreme Court. In the interim, we, again, before my time, passed an affordable housing impact fee. But there was also development looking to go into North San Jose. And the council at that time had a decision. Do we hold the line and say, nothing gets built in North San Jose until we work all this legal uncertainty out? Or do we let housing be built because we need housing of all sorts? And the council at that time said, let's let housing be built. And because the, the inclusionary housing rule was legally challenged, it took some years and we did not immediately have an affordable housing impact fee to fall back on. In a, in a short period of many months, few years, all the housing came up in North San Jose with barely any of it being affordable. And that poses a problem to this day. It is hard enough to crack because whoever wants to help us out of it needs to be flexible, it needs to be realistic, it needs to understand the history and also the terrain of North San Jose. And of course, the zoning, which is something that I think I pride myself on, on the city council, more so than other council members. I think second, probably only to Mayor Licardo, I'm the land use guy.
Okay, our next question, we will start with Councilman Diop and it will be one minute each. The council just approved a commercial linkage fee ordinance with fees far lower than other surrounding jurisdictions. As a council member, will you support increasing this fund when it is brought back for consideration?
I will, we voted to look to study it. So I want to see the study. I want to see what the feasibility is. We had a study that was conducted prior to COVID and it, and then a feasibility study that suggested upwards of, I think, $35,000, sorry, $35 per square foot, if I'm not mistaken, in the downtown core. What we ended up passing was a $15 square foot, $12 if you pay upfront. And that was because even in the study, we, they, the, the people who conducted the study said that, you know, this is outdated data. It's, it doesn't, it kind of guesses about COVID, but it's, it's not realistic. It's not accurate. And leading up to those, that vote, just a day or two before, we had, I forget, I think it was Pinterest in San Francisco, willing to pay $96 million, I believe, to break a lease because they didn't want to have a fiscal office space in San Francisco anymore. And given that reality, I think we moved the ball on affordable housing. We're going to get dollars for it. Is it as much as advocates want? No, but it is a step forward for affordable housing and it is a win.
David?
Yeah, yes, I support a higher commercial linkage fee. You know, I'm appreciative that the council came around. I think a year earlier, the council wouldn't have supported any commercial linkage fee, which is kind of interesting. You know, I hear the council members and I'm not necessarily singling out any individual council member, but the council members who were against a higher impact fee a year earlier were saying that they didn't want any impact fee and now they're blaming COVID for the low number that they picked this year. I think that they, the opposite was happening. There was so much pressure now to have a linkage fee that they agreed to have one, even though it was somewhat low. And then they blamed COVID for the fact that it was low. I think we can afford, that we can in our city have an impact, a commercial linkage fee that's comparable to the cities around us. My belief is that developers will build in the city based on demand and that the commercial linkage fee will, should be comparable and we should be able to get money that pays for the impacts and will help us meet the biggest challenge that our city has, which is building affordable housing.
Okay, so our next question from our, an audience member will also be one minute each and we'll start again with David. This person says, a number of audience members asked a question that touched upon a vision for North San Jose. We asked about affordable housing in that area, but what is your vision for Alviso?
So Alviso is, you know, a great historic community. And I think, you know, whatever, whatever we do at Alviso has to take into account preserving the history of the community and the character of the community. It also has to take into account the really important ecological needs of being the only bayfront in San Jose. We have the concerns of rising sea level and climate change. We have the concerns of the marshland and bird habitats there. And so what we do there depends a lot on, on the, the ecological impacts on preserving the history. And so I'm a little bit cautious about large-scale developments in Alviso. I think that, you know, tasteful housing developments there can be, can be useful. But I also think that we need to make sure that we have a modernized road infrastructures there. The area has been neglected in some parts of the, of some parts of Alviso and we need to make sure that the residents who are there are taken care of.
Councilman Diop?
Yeah, so we're just asking about my, my personal vision. I have not any plans. I would love to see like a harbor type area, a waterfront, a passeo, whatever you want to call it. You can walk out there, enjoy the water, have some lunch, you know, get ice cream, take some photos, be out there with your kids, family, be a real tourist attraction. And if possible, get ferry service out of Alviso like we used to have back historically before the trains came. So you can go to San Francisco or Oakland or Richmond or wherever. I mean, that's, that's the vision. I don't know that that's feasible because we haven't had the ferry service for so long and it would cost an exorbitant amount of money to dredge the bay right now to make that happen. But on the larger point, I think Alviso is historic. But on the larger point, I think Alviso is historic. I think it is special in that it's not cookie cutter. It's the only place in San Jose that I know where you can see a mini mart next to somebody's house. I really like that vibe, and I would do my best to preserve it as is without too much interference from modernity.
Okay, our next question will also be one minute, and we will start again with Councilman Diop. Tiny home villages have been a controversial topic in District 4. All council members have agreed to consider them in their district, but so far, all have been located in District 3. What would you do to push for a tiny home village in District 4?
I don't know that it's, that's necessarily true. The one that we do have by the Bart Station is technically District 3. We have a second one coming up, and I believe that's in District 7. So, so, but to the point, I won't. I do agree that we need one in every district. And we looked at a land inventory already, and we attempted to do it. Each district had one, maybe two parcels of available land. And when we talked to the community about it, I was, at least in District 4, residents were unhappy with it. The parcel we identified was by the Berries or Library. I believe it's along Noble Road. There's a field there. And I was, I held a community meeting with Supervisor Dave Cortezi about homelessness. And the people who showed up didn't want to talk about homelessness. They wanted to talk about the tiny homes. And they shouted down the supervisor. He left early. He left me hanging to take that, that meeting by myself. And when I left, I was, I had a human tunnel just shouting, shouting against me. And I stayed to the very end, talking to every individual until they left, because I wouldn't run away. And that is kind of the attitude I will take to it. I'll talk to everybody who wants to discuss it, to explain everything that they need to hear.
David?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is a tough one. I was a parent at the school where the property was near. I mean, so I understand that, you know, people get very anxious with location. But I mean, I think the solution, first of all, we need to be very firm and say, "Look, this is a community problem, and homeless people are living right next to the school and right under the creek and right next to your, right next to here, right now, anyway." And people don't understand that you, that, that what we're talking about is making your community safer. And I think we need to be very firm about helping people understand that. And actually, what we've, what we've seen in the last few months, as more homeless encampments have grown right around neighborhoods, is a willingness for people to believe that if you actually had a safe place, even if it were close by, it would be better than the current setup where people are making themselves at home in places that are less safe. Having said that, I think that introducing people in their community to actual residents who are, who need places to live and getting people to know people who live on the streets actually makes people feel a connection and gets to know people as real people and helps them feel a little bit more empathy and less fear about having a community near their home and near their community.
Okay, our next question is also a minute, and we'll start with you, David. How will you ensure students at Orchard School are safe now that Charcot Avenue is being expanded?
Yeah, you know, this is one of those issues that I, that, you know, I'm, I don't know that the project is necessarily finalized. I mean, we have, there's still a lot of things that have to happen before the project is done. I think that over time, we need to adjust our thoughts about where roads get put. Unfortunately, the general plan was written 25 years ago before there was a school there, and it would have been better to have reconsidered that road project once the school and neighborhood were put in place without enough space for the road. We needed, if, if in fact the road was going to be built in that location, we needed an overcrossing or a bridge under for students to make sure that there was a place for people to walk safely. We don't have that. We also have the concern about large amounts of traffic and noise and exhaust right near the school. So I will continue to advocate against having that road there. And I think that it's still, you know, not completely done deal. But, you know, I will make sure that we have safety in place to, you know, crossing guards and other things in place for the students if that project is built.
Councilman Diop?
Yeah, so we have taken into consideration the safety of schoolchildren crossing. The over, Charcot Overpass does divide the school and residential area. We're putting in a hawk signal, which is not just a red light or a simple thing, but it kind of is in your face, and it is more jarring than a normal stoplight. And, you know, there have been accusations or characterizations of us putting a highway into a residential neighborhood. But really, this is a single lane in each direction overcrossing, and it opens up to accept a left turn on one end. And so it opens up to three lanes that students will be crossing. And as we talk about urbanizing San Jose, we talk about densifying. You think about places where kids do actually cross city streets. New York City going to school, Chicago, real urban environments, and they do it every day. And for any politician, any elected official, public safety is first and foremost, and especially that of children. And so we will take every precaution necessary to preserve their, their health and safety.
Okay, this is our final question, and it will also be a minute, and we'll start with Councilman Diop. You know, the last few weeks, California's been hit by raging wildfire. You know, what is your plan to make sure this city is prepared for any disasters? What would you do to make sure that people are safe, safe and healthy?
That's a pretty broad, "safe and healthy". I think that we need to understand and recognize that this is probably the new normal, whether it's climate change, wildfires, flooding, superstorms, or even health pandemics. We need to factor this in to whatever we're baking. And that, that may mean making sure that higher, better standards, fire safety standards for new buildings, that they're fire resistant. You know, allotting for school class sizes and such that aren't overcrowded, where it's 30 or more students to a teacher to accommodate for the social distancing, the physical distancing. But rethinking how we've done things and then affecting it into policy. The policy thinking is the fun part. It's the imagining the better world. The harder part is finding dollars for it, because the way that cities are funded, as, you know, one learns, when you kind of dig into the weeds in the budget, it's, it's pretty upside down. And San Jose is not funded for what is expected of us, and we need more business to help generate those dollars.
David?
Well, I would say we talked about some of these things tonight. It's addressing some of the issues of equity. It's making sure that we have cooperation with our county and state to make sure that we have resources in place to be prepared. We need to make sure that we have the right, you know, staffing and coverage for our fire department so that we have the right response times to get across our city. You know, I, I would say that this is an opportunity to mention probably one of the most important issues that we shouldn't lose sight of, which is climate change. I mean, we shouldn't rest on the fact that the city has been a decent leader in climate change, because there's a lot more we can do. We need to, to really accelerate our electrification of our infrastructure, making sure that we electrify our buses, making sure that we retrofit buildings that aren't up to code, make sure that we put more solar into our, into our buildings and rooftops, make sure that we build everything up to modern green code even better than, than we've been talking about in the past, improve our transportation infrastructure in a way that's going to get us to carbon zero. So we should be a leader nationally and a model for reducing to carbon zero.
Okay, and we are going to go ahead and finish up with one-minute closing statements each. We'll start with you, David.
Okay. Well, I've called District 4 my home for over 22 years and raised my family here. During my 20 years serving the community on the school board and library commission, I've learned that what our community wants most is an engaged council member who has an open door and will be responsive and interactive with neighbors and reach, who reach out for help from the city. The lack of that kind of responsiveness over the last four years is why community leaders across the district asked me to run. I didn't run for the seat when it was open five years ago, because I was focused on my career and high tech, and my family, and on the work we do every day in the school board to strengthen our local public schools. But I've watched many problems in our city get worse, and the council grow more divided. And so I decided that our district needs and deserves a stronger advocate in City Hall. It is important to note that I'm not running for an open seat, but I'm running against an incumbent. And that's because I feel that there are many ways that the district isn't being adequately served. And so, you know, it is important to make sure people understand that there are differences between us, and that people should, should look and decide which style and what substance they prefer in their candidate. Thank you.
Councilman Diop?
Yeah, so I appreciate the opportunity to discuss housing and equity issues tonight, this forum. I've been the council member for four years, and it's been a real honor, a real learning experience. It's changed me, and I really have felt that I've really dug into the nooks and crannies of it and trying to read as much as I can, learn as much as I can, and to build a better San Jose. And I think we're on a good trajectory. I'd like to continue serving. I have been responsive over emails, over in-person meetings. I've made myself available on social media, I think, unlike any other council member in the history of San Jose. And I, I kind of reject the criticism that I don't listen. My opponent, you know, says that he's a leader who listens. And I think of a nice discussion, the nuances between us. I think it's good that he would, because, you know, he does have a lot to learn still about city stuff. And I think with that experience in mind already, I am best positioned to continue helping San Jose move forward towards a brighter future.
Okay, well, I would just like to thank our forum sponsors tonight, Silicon Valley at Homes Action Fund and California YIMBY, and the co-hosts Silicon Valley Community Foundation, the Tech Equity Collaborative, ABOD Services, EAH Housing, First Community Housing, and Destination Home. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you, man.